Good evening, I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting February 16th to order. And I want to welcome everybody tonight, thank you for coming to this meeting. I know this morning it was hard to get out, but I think the weather's improved some. And all the commissioners are here, our attorneys here, our county manager is here, and I think our finance officer is probably someplace, I don't know where he's at, but our clerk is here, so thank you. Our agenda tonight, we have five presentations, fourteen consent items, and just one decision item. So Pastor Jason Kuhn from Bridge Forty-Two Church is gonna give the invocation tonight, and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be by the students of Drexel Elementary School. And Brian just said that we won't have to worry about the kids standing behind them, that they won't see us, because they're not real tall, so thank you all for coming. Would you all please rise for the invocation? Thank you.
Let's pray together. Father, I'm reminded this evening of the words in Scripture where it says, "Pray for the kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way." So this evening we come praying for our leaders, and we pray for those whom you have put in authority over us on this earth, and we ask you to give them wisdom to guide their hearts and guide their thinking, that everything that's done in this room this evening might be glorifying to you. We ask that you would conform our wills to your own will. We ask that you would take our plans and show us the smallness of our plans in comparison with the greatness of your plan for humanity, for this earth, and for us individually. We ask you for grace as we meet in this room, help us to come together in unity, as we all seek what's best for this county, for the towns, the cities, the communities, and the neighborhoods that are represented here. We ask you to bless each one, we ask you to bless each town, each community, each neighborhood, we ask you to bless each resident of our county, each person that is represented by this board. Help us to love you more deeply and to follow you more closely, teach us to look to Christ, the one who gave up his life on the cross, that all who believe would be forgiven and restored to a right standing with our Creator. And it's in his name that we pray this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. The kids can come right up here, and the flag's over here, so they can stand up here. Flag is, like I say, in the corner. Guys, the flag is over in the corner here, so you can sort of face it.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all stay right there, we're gonna come down and take a picture with you all, that'll go on the wall over here. All right, our next item under number four is approval of the meeting minutes. We have minutes from the seventeenth, the regular meeting, December second, agenda meeting, fifteenth of December, regular meeting, twenty-eighth of December, our special meeting. And we can take those all at one time if there's no changes, if deletions or additions, I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve all one hundred and ten pages?
Good, thank you Maynard. Thank you, Maynard. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like, sign, that passes five to zero, Madam Clerk. Approval of the agenda, I think you've all had time to look at the agenda, and I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Don't move.
All right, thank you, Jack. You've all heard the motion from Jack. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like, sign, that passes five to zero, Madam Clerk. Like I say, we have five presentations tonight. The first one is Burke County Public Schools. Keith is not with us, but Ms. Amy Fender is here to present. And Amy, you can come over to the podium, or to the table, wherever you'd like to sit and/or stand. And this is the presentation of the financial data for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. My name is Amy Fender, and like you said, I do work with Mr. Lawson in finance, and he's out of town at a meeting, so I'm stepping in his place. I don't work with these budgets on a daily basis, I'm just here to strictly just fill in and kind of go over this with you. Do you have the...okay. All right, this is our estimated revenues for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. I'm gonna do each fund at a time. If you look at our state fund, our estimated amount for this school year was seventy-four million, seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is seventy-two percent of our total budget. So far this year, we have received thirty-seven million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-three. That is fifty point seven percent so far received of the total budget. And that is about point seven percent over budget for the year so far, which is estimates to five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over budget so far this year. If you look at the federal funding, the estimated amount to receive for the year is eight million, three hundred thousand, and that is eight percent of our overall budget. And we have received three million, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, that is thirty-six point nine percent of the total budget. And even though that looks like we're under budget, doesn't necessarily mean that that's the case, because federal funding, as you may know, is received on a reimbursement basis only. So that money basically has to be floated from our fund balance until we receive our reimbursement. Our local estimated revenues for the year is fourteen million, five hundred, thirty-nine thousand, and four hundred dollars, which is fourteen percent of our total budget. And we have received seven million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, which is forty-eight point four percent received so far this year. And that is taking into consideration charter schools and the timber receipts. Fines and forfeitures, the estimated amount to receive is three hundred and eighty thousand, point four percent of the overall budget. We have received one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight, which is about forty-two point seven percent so far received, so we are on budget. The fund balance, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one is the estimated amount, which is point nine percent of the budget. Year-to-date, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. So we are having to use our fund balance to balance our budget so far this year. In the special revenue, we have five million dollars estimated, which is four point eight percent of the overall budget. We have received one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is thirty-five point one percent of the budget. And that is like our federal funding, it is on a reimbursement basis as well. If you look at the next page, the next slide, this slide shows our local financials by purpose and function. And then at the beginning, the first four or five rows, we have our expenses, regular instructional services, support and development services, community services, payments to other governmental units, and then our reserve. If you look about in the middle column where it says budget, you'll see the budgeted expenses at fourteen million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars. And then at the bottom, if you go straight down from there, you'll see the revenue, Burke County Timber Receipts, Charter Schools, Article Forty-Two, and fines and forfeitures, to reflect the revenue at fourteen million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred, which matches the expenses. If you'll notice in the reserve column, where you see the eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, that is what we have to have in our special fund balance in order to be able to balance our local budget. And that is all that I have so far.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Keith Lawson made reference to that you were gonna end up seven hundred thousand less from the state. What item was that? If I could...the reason I want to know is, expect to meet with Pat McQuarrie and some other people shortly, and want to have that specific item to discuss.
Seven hundred thousand in what? Can you say that again, please?
He said that the state had mandated that y'all pick up seven hundred thousand that they usually pay for. Do you know what that item is?
The seven hundred, it's seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Is that what you're referring to?
I think so.
In funding needs for the school year? That is actually several different items that make up that seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. The one-time seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus to all employees, that is in there at fifty-eight thousand, nine thirty-eight. We had an increase in our retirement and health insurance rates, which made up thirteen thousand of that amount. We had twenty-five teachers in a certain category, their salaries went up two thousand per year, twenty-two additional teacher salary went up. We had forty-five teachers that stepped up to the next tier in their pay scale. There was an increase for retire and healthcare for employees. We had a state reduction of three point twenty-five teaching positions for this year. State reduction for virtual charter schools, North Carolina Virtual Academy, and our North Carolina Connections Academy. And all of those things added up to the seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And I know Mr. Lawson would be glad to give you a breakdown of all that if you need it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Amy? All right, thank you, Amy.
All right.
And if there's no other questions, I'll be happy to receive that presentation and accept the report as presented. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, item two is, again, Western Piedmont Community College, and Sandy Holman is gonna give the presentation for the financial data for the same period. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, and good evening. I want to give you a snapshot of our budget for this current year, the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. If you'll look in the first three columns there, this is our state funding. Our formula allotment for fifteen sixteen is fifteen million, five thirty-nine, oh twenty-nine. And so far, we've received four hundred and eighty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars through the first six months for additional funding for customized training, carry-forward funds, and grants, for a total availability of sixteen million, oh twenty-five, oh fifty-six. We will receive additional funding for longevity, and also in January, we were informed we were gonna have a budget reversion, so that will come in in the last six months. But through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, we have received seven million, six twenty-four, four eighty-seven, and spent seven million, five oh three, seven thirty-four, or forty-six point eight percent of our budget. So we feel like we're managing our state budget very well where we are currently at. The next three columns is our county budget. Our county budget is two million, four forty-six, three twenty-nine, and we've received one million, one nineteen, three eighty-two of our budget. Our expenditures through the second quarter were one million, three twenty-six, nine forty-seven, or forty-five point eight percent of the budget. The negative current operating cash you see there is just due to a timing difference, as we received our December appropriation in January of two thousand and sixteen, as the college was closed for the holiday break. However, we had enough funds in our fund balance to cover that, and did receive that at the beginning of January. We currently have one position open, it's an HVAC technician that we've been unable to fill due to salary constraints, so we are looking at some other options there for our HVAC needs. The last three columns that you'll see is our institutional budget. We budgeted eight million, nine eighty, three thirty for our institutional funds, which includes our financial aid, grants the college receives, self-supporting courses, our bookstore, and other miscellaneous accounts. Most of these accounts are restricted in nature, just depending on where the funds came from. Approximately seventy-five percent is for financial student aid, and fifteen percent for our bookstore. The budget is less than the previous year due to lower enrollment, and also a less reliance on self-supporting courses, because this summer, the legislation is gonna allow funding for our summer courses, so we won't be having any self-supporting courses for curriculum this summer. So we have received three million, five eighty-three, nine fifty-eight, and spent three million, eight sixty-nine, eight ninety-eight, or forty-three point one percent of the budget. Again, the negative amount there, just like with the public school system, many of our grants are on a reimbursement, so you spend the money and then you request the reimbursement after the fact, so there is always some timing differences there. Our total combined college budget for fifteen sixteen is twenty-seven million, four fifty-one, seven fifteen, of which we have expended twelve million, four ninety-three, oh fourteen, or forty-five point five percent. So midway through the year, we feel like this is a good position for the college, and that we're managing the budgets very well. What you'll see on the bottom left is our capital improvement projects. We still have one project with the state for repairs and renovations. However, we may need to utilize those funds for our Megatronics building. And then the second column is the county. They have matched four hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred for the Megatronics building, and allotted two hundred and twenty-five thousand for a two-story burn building for our emergency service training center. The following attachment here is just a breakdown of the expenditures for our county expenditures, that break it down by major category versus a purpose code, so you can see the difference. Our major category is salaries and benefits at thirty-eight point one percent, and utilities at twenty-six point eight percent, and then insurance at eleven point four. So that is the breakdown of our county funding there. Wanted to give you an update on our Megatronics building. We are in the process of, in the design phase of that building now. We have contracted with Lobella Associates, they're the architects that we have chosen, and they have sent the schematic designs to state construction, which have been approved, and so we're in the final design stages now. They'll be working on the construction documents after the design is approved by state construction. And then they should be out for bid, hopefully in April, early May, with the construction start date to be in June, is what they're anticipating at this point. Are there any other questions on the county budget, or any of the expenditures that we have?
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions from the commissioners for Sandy? Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, Sandy, could you go over the, you mentioned the self-supporting classes in the summer, could you run over that one more time?
Sure. About five years ago, the state eliminated the funding that we received for FTE in the summer, and so colleges had the opportunity at that point to run those same courses, but to do it on a self-supporting basis. So we would run it, but we would keep that funding at the college in an institutional account. It's very difficult for the college to maintain that ongoing, and luckily for us, fortunately, they have allowed this year to go back to funding the summer. Last year, they funded part of it, they funded developmental courses and Tier One A courses. This year, going forward, they're gonna begin funding all the courses again, so the colleges can begin to ramp up the summer again, because most colleges across the state had to reduce courses that they offered during the summer for that reason.
Thank you. Other questions for Sandy? All right, thank you, Sandy. And again, we'll receive the presentation and accept this report as presented. Before Dr. Helmut, I don't know if you're gonna leave, I want to recognize him tonight, too. He has worked faithfully, and Johnny, too, on this bond issue that the state's involved in, which is ninety-one million dollars for Burke County, plus we have a chance at infrastructure money, so I just appreciate both of you. I know you've put a lot of effort, I know both of you have put a lot of time in meetings, and I just want to thank both of you for that. That's big money for Burke County, and we just really appreciate you all doing that. All right, item three is recognition of the council on aging members, and Kathy is here to present, and we are really blessed tonight to have three members with, I believe, twelve consecutive years serving on this council. And Kathy, I'll turn it over to you, I don't want to take away from your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize three citizens who have volunteered their services on the Burke County Council on Aging for a period of twelve years each. These individuals have provided dedicated service in an advisory capacity on matters concerning the status of the aging population, and the existence of or need for programs to enhance the quality of life of older citizens in Burke County. Our goal at the Council on Aging is to always be looking for opportunities to enhance life of older citizens, to provide services, to keep them in their homes. And these three people have been on my board for twelve years, and have been faithful members. We want to thank them today with a plaque, so I'd like for each one of them to come up as I call their name, and I'm gonna give them a plaque that Kay has graciously provided.
Good, thank you, Kathy.
The first one is for Betty Ann Elmore.
Well, thank you so much, and I do appreciate, it was wonderful working with the council all their years. I love you.
Round of applause for Betty. Any words of wisdom, Betty?
No. I'm aging, too, so...
We appreciate you. Twelve years is a long time to serve on that, and we appreciate you so much.
It was a pleasure.
The second one goes to Carol Lloyd.
And a round of applause for Carol Ann. Carol Ann, you don't have any words of wisdom you want to share on the twelve years?
And the third plaque goes to Rosemary Onasorj.
Round of applause for Rosemary.
And thank you all, from behalf of the county, we just really, I mean, twelve years is a long time to serve on a board, and we just thank you all so much. Kathy, we thank you for your service, and just, again, another big round of applause for these people.
All right, that takes us down to item four, and again, we're blessed tonight to have recognition of three of our employees receiving college degrees, and Major Jason Black, our training officer, is gonna do the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to bring before the board three of our employees who've really reached a major achievement. First one is Robbie Milton. If you would, come stand beside, please. Nicole Carswell. Robbie Milton is a paramedic preceptor. He helps train new paramedics, also helps hire in the hiring process. He's a sworn law enforcement officer. He has a young child, wife. With all that going on outside, the normal duties are working twenty-four hour shifts and keeping the training up. At Western Carolina University, he's received a bachelor's, a science degree, in emergency and disaster management. Also, Nikki Carswell, she's a paramedic preceptor also here at Burke County EMS. She has two children at home. She's chair of our peer committee, which is public relations. Anytime you see an ambulance at a event, a school, have kids come into our EMS bases, she schedules that. Very, very busy. Again, maintaining training, and despite all that, twenty-four hour shifts, she's received a bachelor's of science degree in emergency medical care from Western Carolina University. Captain Brad Browning, he's been with us since two thousand and one, member of our special operations team, which is a lot of training, a lot of dedication. He's an original member of our HART team, which is where they fly with the National Guard and do rescues and floods and stuff. He's got two daughters. He's went to Western Carolina and received a bachelor's of science degree also in emergency disaster management. So it's my honor and pleasure to present these to the board for recognition.
Good, thank you so much. Anybody want to have a comment or so, or Brad, I know you could...
Yes, sir, I always have comments. I want to thank all of you for allowing us to be here tonight. It's an honor for us to be recognized for our accomplishments in education, but it's more of an honor for us to just to serve the citizens of Burke County. That's the sole purpose that we have, and you could go from the top of our organization to the bottom of our organization, and that's what we're here to do. We're here to serve. And I think that the education and the experience that we have will help to build our system into a better system through the years, and I thank you for having us tonight.
Nicole, anything?
Thank you for the opportunity to serve our county, to work here, live here. It's a pleasure. Enjoy what we do, and we have a very proficient, very efficient emergency services system, and you're very fortunate to live in the county that you live in.
Good, Robbie?
Just to echo what she says, the system we have here is amazing compared to other systems around. It's been an honor to work for Burke County and continue to work for Burke County. Our EMS system here is by far advanced, and we do a very good job of taking care of the citizens, and it's been a pleasure to do so.
Good, we just thank you all so much, and another round of applause. Thank you, Jason. All right, number five on our presentations tonight is a presentation on voter identification, and we got Debbie Mace from our Board of Elections Director to speak to us tonight, and thank you, Debbie, for coming tonight and sharing with us.
Thank you for that opportunity. This is something we've been working on for a while, so it's finally here. For the first time, we can actually say it's a preferential presidential primary. Instead of May that we're used to, we're backing it up to March fifteenth. That will be the election day. There is a cutoff for registration. If you are not registered, or you know someone that isn't registered, February the nineteenth, which is this Friday, is the registration cutoff, by five o'clock that afternoon. And just a little bit of info, it's always twenty-five calendar days before each election, that's your cutoff date. And if you miss it, don't fear, because you can register and vote during early voting. They brought that back this year. You do have to have proper identification. Most of the time, all you will need is your driver's license, because it'll have your photo, which is here now. It will have your current address. If it doesn't have your current address, you can bring a bank statement, a utility bill, something showing your name and your correct address, and that's all you will need to register and vote the same time. That goes on during early voting. Early voting begins Thursday, March the third, and it runs through Saturday, March the twelfth. Now, that one Saturday is the only Saturday we're open for voting, and it's eight to one, eight AM to one PM. The rest of the days, the weekdays, are nine to six. We adjusted that a little bit this year because we were closing at five, well, people that get off work at five, we wanted to give them every opportunity to come in an extra hour, so we changed from nine to six. I have a handout in the back that tells all this information that I'm giving you here, so if you will, pick one up on the way out. If you have any questions about early voting, we're at the office Monday through Friday, we'll be glad to talk to you. Voter ID is here. What that means is, if you have driver's license, you have photo ID. All you do is show it, have it in your hand, ready to show it to us when you come in to vote. You can use the driver's license or a permit, you can use a passport, military ID... You can use the driver's license or a permit. You can use a passport, military ID, veterans' IDs, even most tribal enrollment cards. If they have an expiration date on them, they must be valid. Some of these do not have an expiration date. They are also valid, but if they have one, it must be valid. I have a card at the back, a colored card. If everybody would, just grab one on your way out. It shows the types that I just described to you. This really surprised me, but this is the fact. If you have a driver's license, it may be expired up to four years. So it does not have to be unexpired or doesn't have to be valid, I'm sorry. It can be unexpired, it can be expired four years. I thought that was a little strange, but that is the law. It just happens. And also, if a person is 70 years of age and their license was good on the day they turned 70, if it was not expired, then that license is good from now on as far as voting. If you turn 70, we'd have a formula that we've worked out that where our poll workers can look at it very quickly, so we're not going to hold the line up trying to determine that. There's another exception to the voter ID, curbside. If you are eligible for curbside voting, that means you are unable to enter the voting place. For whatever reason, if you're unable to come inside, you can vote curbside. You do not have to have a photo ID, but you do have to have a form of ID that shows your current registration address and your current name. That can be a utility bill. It's what we call a HAVA document, Help America Vote Act. You can use all those types of things, a bank statement, utility bill, car registration, anything that has your current name and your current address. You can provide at curbside voting. If you vote in your vehicle and somebody challenges that and you are able to come in, you've committed fraud in a couple ways. You signed an oath saying that you were unable to come in when in fact you were. And if that's challenged and if it's found to be true, then that is a felony. So that's a serious thing. We've had grandparents come in, their grandchildren would drive them to the polling place, and because the grandmother could not come in, the grandchild thought they should vote there as well. Does not work that way. There's also absentee voting by mail. I am a big supporter of voting by mail because I think it helps the elderly. But anyone, you don't have to be elderly, anyone that is registered to vote may vote absentee by mail. I have some forms at the back here that show what you need to do to fill that out. It's very simple. Even for college kids, it's a good way to vote. If they still have their Burke County address as their home and they're away at college, we can send them an absentee ballot to college. Anyone at any time can vote, as long as you're registered, you can vote an absentee in the privacy of your own home. That is one of the best things that has happened to voting in a long time. These forms back here, you're allowed to make copies of them. If you know any friends, relatives, just feel free to pick some up and come by and see me if you need any more. Religious objective. There are people that do not consent to being photographed and we know that. Therefore, the state has forms that they can sign and they will be available at all precincts and they will also have to vote a provisional ballot. And what that does, even though they don't have to have a photo ID, they vote a paper ballot, then they come to us before canvas, which is a week after the election. They have to come to us before canvas with something, a HAVA document, shows their current name and address, utility bill, bank statement, divorce papers, whatever, as long as it shows their current name and address. If someone does not have a photo ID, you can get one at the DMV free of charge. When you go in, you must tell them that you want a photo ID used for voting purposes only. And they will give you one with the proper documentation. Those documents are, you have to have two that prove your age and identity, for example, a birth certificate, marriage certificate, tax forms, court documents. Then you also must have one document that proves your North Carolina residency, such as a voter registration card, utility bill, bank statement, there again. You also must have your social security number, not necessarily the card, but the number, because they will verify all this before they give you that ID. And as long as you state that it's for voting purposes, it will be free of charge. Let me get back to absentee ballot just a moment. We talked about the college kids. Parents can come in and sign up for their children. There are certain cases where somebody else can fill out that absentee request form for you. Those instances are spouses, children, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandchild, brother, sister, parents, stepchild, legal guardian, grandparents, stepparent, mother-in-law, or father-in-law. All of those people can come in and request for somebody that they're related to in those forms. So it's really, it's really not a hard thing to do. If you know somebody that needs help and you're related to them in one of these ways, please help them get an absentee at home. That would be so much better than for them to say, "Well, I can't get out, so I just won't vote." I've had a lot of people tell me that because they didn't know about this. And the other topic, and I'll be finished, 17-year-olds. A 17-year-old that will be 18 by the November election, I believe it's November the 8th, if my memory serves me correctly, may vote in the primary. Now, there is one thing on this primary ballot they will not be able to vote on, and that is the bond. And the reason being, any item on a primary ballot that the person is 17 years old and won't be 18 until November, they can't vote on anything that becomes final. If there were a referendum, if there were anything that would be decided on that ballot for the primary, a 17-year-old would not be eligible to vote on that. But see, everything they're going to be voting on is candidates. They move to November, therefore they will be 18 by then. So that's why they cannot vote. And they have their own ballot style. We have two Democratic ballots, two Republicans, two of every ballot style. One is for 18 up, the other's for 17. Is anybody having questions?
Questions for Debbie?
Couple if I may. Debbie, were you aware this was being mailed?
The state actually put that out, I believe. And we had today, I had a stack this tall of those people.
Well, that's very good. I was surprised. I think it came my mail Saturday. Did you gentlemen get a copy of this?
I didn't get one. I don't know why, but maybe they thought I didn't.
Do you like one?
But yeah, a lot of people's using that.
And I appreciate you bringing up the fact of the 17-year-old. It was brought up in another meeting that I was in and that's a pretty big deal. It's the first time and it allows children at 17 years old to get comfortable and used and get the education of actually voting, so.
And I will tell you that my board, all three of, well, I had to get a fill-in for Gary because as you all know, he is very, very sick. But we got a lady to stand in for him and we went to all the high schools and you would not believe the 17-year-olds that did not know about this, that we got registered. We had 120 some registration forms turned in out of four high schools, which is awesome.
My final question, Mr. Chairman, do you intend to have the budget, do you intend to do a little newspaper advertising or radio or anything for this?
I have been advertising. We have to put our ads in the legal ad section. A lot of people don't see them there, but that's where it's required by law that I put them. And I have been running them for the past month, a couple times a week. I did do a public service announcement about early voting and voter ID to all the local radio stations.
Good, great.
Other comments for Debbie? All right, thank you Debbie. And again, we receive this presentation except this report is presented. Item seven on our agenda tonight is a scheduled public hearing to do with the Water and Sewer Division on the Anna Street, CDBG grant closeout public hearing. And Chris, you're here, or Lisa Helton from the COG, is she here?
Yep, just me, I think.
All right, just you. All right, thank you, Chris.
Not much, but I'm all you got.
All right.
And as you well know, as we're at the end of this project, in 2013, Burke County received $333,350 in a community development block grant, infrastructure project, to install water and sewer to 21 households on Anna Street off of Highway 70 towards Hildebrand. The project benefited 44 persons with 100% benefit to low and moderate income and it was completed and is now ready to close out. There remains out of that $333,000, a $21.59 fund that was not used. So that money will be returned to the state and a public hearing is required to close, as part of the closeout procedure. And in doing so, the board is asked to authorize the chairman to sign all the documents after the meeting for submission to the Department of Commerce and to re-obligate or to return the $21.59. So the clerk has all those documents and those will be submitted once the meeting is concluded.
Good, thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris before we open the public hearing? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this issue tonight? There being none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the Commissioners on this item?
Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute all related grant documentation for CDBG number 12C 2490 for submission to the Department of Commerce and to de-obligate $21.59 in grant funding.
Good, thank you Jeff for the motion. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to item eight, informal public comments. And again, each speaker is limited to three minutes. And Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, we have one speaker tonight, Ms. Frances Howell.
All right, thank you. Welcome Frances, how you doing?
Good evening.
Good.
Can you hear me?
Uh huh.
My name is Frances Howell. I've lived in Burke County for nine years now. Me and my husband relocated from Ash County, North Carolina here almost 10 years ago. I've actually come tonight to voice opinion about possible animal ordinances. It's been brought up that we should have become an anti-tethering community, requiring animals to be spayed or neutered, and for the residents to now pay an animal registration fee. As an animal owner, I find these ideas to be beyond just animal welfare. I'm concerned about the implications these changes could possibly cause for our community. I've lived here for nine years enjoying the space and community that this county offers. Owning dogs in this county has been wonderful, leaving my vet and I to discuss and decide what is best for each of my individual animals. Requesting these types of changes not only takes away my rights as an animal owner, it is requiring things that cannot only be bad for my dog's health, but for our community. Anti-tethering laws have been brought up within communities with the main goal of limiting animal cruelty. No one wants an animal to suffer, especially me. But it is not the form of containment that causes the cruelty, it is the owners. It is like a gun. The gun cannot shoot or kill anyone, but a person must pull a trigger. A chain or tether cannot harm a dog. Only the person tethering can do that. The Cornell University published a study about tethering comparing tethered dogs versus outside kennel dogs. They proved that not only is tethering humane, it does not cause the aggression issues that are brought up with any tethered animal. In my area, if I walk, I'm accosted by my neighbors' dogs and stray dogs. It has made it unsafe for my family and my dogs to walk. We now walk at the lake or at a park for fear of being attacked by someone's dogs. My dogs who are tethered receive more space than any outdoor kennel or inside of any home. They get sunlight, playtime with the other dogs that are outside with them, and plenty of my time every single day. A chain of 15 feet gives a dog 706 square feet of space. A 10-by-6 kennel, which you could buy at Tidder Supply, gives the dog only 60 square feet. And a large 3-foot-by-10-foot kennel in a house gives them 6 feet. Responsible owners, including your hunters, sport dog owners, and confirmation show dog owners, use tethering to responsibly contain their animals. Many rental homes already restrict dog ownership by not allowing pets inside and will only allow them outdoors to keep from having issues in their rentals. Banning and limiting the tethering will only affect the people who are responsibly tethering. Those who tether without care will just let the animals loose or put them in an outdoor kennel and ignore them, creating a possible case of unwanted litters, livestock loss, and dog-to-human bites by loose dogs. Another concern is the mandatory spay and neuter. They've proved a lot about early spay and neuter causing a lot of hip dysplasia issues, stuff like that. And the last concern is the registration. There's a lot of dog theft in this area currently. I kind of fear that putting my information out there, even if it's supposed to be private, is not necessarily going to be private. And the cost is also a factor. People are already having issues with deciding to keep their animal or not. And I would be afraid it would just become too expensive overall. So in closing, I'm offering my help. Any committees or groups or discussions about animal ordinances, I'm offering my free time and my knowledge. I also offer up any educational material that you request, including the studies I have mentioned today. Thank you.
Good, thank you Frances. All right, that takes us down to... Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry Johnny. May I ask that Frances, if you will, email a copy of your presentation to the clerk? Thank you. Good, thank you. Thank you. And that takes us down to item nine, consent agenda. And I believe we have 14 items under the consent agenda. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first one is BOC, Joint BOC BoE Resolution Supporting the Connect NC Public Improvement Bond. Number two, clerk appointment to Council on Aging. Number three, clerk appointment to Adult Care Home CAC. Number four, clerk appointment, reappointment, and removal to Burke County Library Board of Trustees. Item five, clerk Commerce Fellow's CDBG Progress Report. Item six, Community Development 2016 Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan and Resolution. Item seven, County Manager Historic Courthouse Cleaning Contract. Item eight, County Manager Permission for East Burke Senior Center Association to Apply for Grant Funding. Item nine, General Services Solid Waste Collections Volvo Roll-Off Truck Bid Award. Item 10, General Services Water and Sewer Division Anna Street CDBG Final Quarterly Progress Report. Item 11, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for December 2015. Item 12, Tax Department Release Refund Report for January 2000, is that 16? All right. Item 13, Tax Department Tax Collection Report for January 2016. And item 14, Tax Department Order to Advertise 2015 Delinquent Real Property Taxes. And that concludes your consent agenda items.
Good, thank you Brian. Any questions on the consent agenda for Brian?
I do think that should have been 2016.
2016, right. Comments, questions?
That was my only comment. It should be 2016.
And I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. That passes, Madam Clerk, 5 to 0. Again, tonight, we only have one item under items for decision and it's provision of the Cleaning Services Cleaning Contract for remainder of FY16. And again, Chris?
Thank you gentlemen. The current Cleaning Services vendor has demonstrated over the portion of their year that they're not capable of fulfilling the 2016 Cleaning Services agreement. They've been issued a 30-day notice of contract termination and the staff recommends entering to a new contract with Patent Cleaning Company for the remainder of FY16. Patent Cleaning Company was a bidder in the original packet and they will honor their amount that they bid back in spring of 2015. The amount is higher than the low bid winner, which is in place now, by $3,388.17 per month. And funding will need to be appropriated out of the general fund, fund balance, to make up that difference. The total amount needed to see out the remainder of the year, this fiscal year, which would be March through June, is $13,552.67. The total price is $102,400 for the period of March 1st and ending on June 30th, 2016.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris on the cleaning contract?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, any comment after they received the letter that we were dismissing them?
None to me or my staff, no.
Okay. So I'll head.
Other comments, questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the Commission on our number 10 item for decision?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to award the Cleaning Services Contract for the remainder of year 2016 to Patent Cleaning of year 2016 to Patent Cleaning Company for $102,400, and $13,552.67 will need to be appropriated from the general fund balance.
Good, thank you, Maynard, for the motion. All those, again, in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, that passes five to zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
That takes us down to item 11, and I think Paul did sneak in here some way. I didn't see him earlier, maybe he was here, but he's going to do a financial report ending December 31st, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, you have a budget and actual comparison for the first six months of the year. I'll just briefly go down the list, point out anything that I think maybe looks a little out of line, but the first section on the revenues, property tax revenue, which is information Danny has included previously in his report, is 35 million out of a $42.7 million budget. As everyone, I think, is well aware, our large collection months have now passed, so between now and the end of the year, the tax revenue will drop off dramatically. So, when you see that number, and where we are, the excess of revenues over expenditures will decrease. Sales tax, we're right on target, 51% of the budget. All the other revenues combined, which is $29.4 million. Percentage-wise, it looks like we're a little behind on that, but most of that is due to timing of when we receive some of the revenues. So, right now, there's nothing that I'm aware of that would be cause for alarm. In expenditures, I've listed each departmental budget and actual, and there's only two items in there that sort of looks out of norm. The courts budget, it's a small budget, 13.2 million. They've only spent $700 basically to this point in time, 5.2%, but most of their budget is for capital items, and they normally order those later in the fiscal year. The other item is under legal. It looks 76% of the budget of $245,000 has been spent to date. Just want to make you aware that that is the budget that includes the legal settlement with the town of Drexel, which was due in December. So, that $125,000 payment skews that percentage, and when I redid the number, which you do know I have, but if you back $125,000 out of the budget and actual, that percentage would be 51% spent. As you'll notice, all the other budgets are in the 30%, 40%, you know, 50% range, so there's no other budgets that would be cause for alarm at this point in time. Obviously, the transportation, 100%, that's our payment to the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Administration, and we've made two payments to them, and we've already made those for the year, so that's why that shows 100% spent. But overall, we've spent 43.7% of a $77.1 million budget, and currently, through December, we have an excess of $12.5 million of revenue over expenses. Be glad to try to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Paul?
Mr. Chairman, no question on the budget, except one question on sales tax. Paul, have you got a... How are we going to look on it? Is it... What's the increase this year over last year, if we have any?
Right now, you know, we're, like I said, we're slightly ahead of our budget projection, and I think the last time I looked, we were like 5%, you know, month-over-month increase from last year. Now, a lot of that is harder to look at because the timing of when refunds are issued by the Department of Revenue, because those refunds are taken away from our allocation. So, sometimes it's not easy to compare month to month, because refunds, if they're issued, if Department of Revenue issues those in December versus January, you know, that, you can't really compare, you know, month to month under that scenario. But we're doing well.
Good.
Other comments, questions for Paul? All right, thank you, Paul. Will receive this presentation and accept this report as presented. Thank you so much. All right, our under... Item two, under reports and comments. Brian, the 215 summary of accomplishments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll briefly go over this. First, we start off with economic development. The three projects that we had in 2015, the 410 Hogan Project, the Duralie Fabric, and Sparta Craft. You have on the next page, information about different things that occurred during the year. Of course, we replaced our president and CEO of Burke Development. Alan Wood is now on board. He'll have been here about a year next month. About a year ago next month, we had a ribbon cutting at Peds that included Governor McCrory there with Michael Penner, Peds President and CEO, and Walmart, and a Walmart representative. That was quite nice to have Governor in our county. Go to your next page, you have 911. We purchased and installed three additional channels and completed memorandums of agreement with neighboring counties for joint funding to help pay for these channels. The channels serve a multitude of areas and agencies, and the officers are getting busies, and if you're getting busy, that means you can't talk, and if you've got a problem, you really want to get help to you. So, we did that to enable them to have better capacity to call, and the towers, some of those are on the edges of our county line or a neighboring county line, but they still serve both counties, so that's why we did a memorandum of agreement with those counties, and they helped with the payment of that. Another one that you may have some interest in is the simulcast system. Developed simulcast system plan to replace outdated paging system for the Burke County Volunteer Fire Departments and initiated installation. The first part of that should be completed this month in 2016. They did a number of other things during this period of time. The P-25 upgrade, they worked with state to facilitate the reprogramming of all 1,046 radios that are in use in Burke County on the Viper system. And that's a result of the FCC requiring reduced power on these transmissions, so they don't go as far, and we had to do some work there. You may remember that in 2015, National Telecommunicators Week awarded six lifesaving awards to our employees at Burke County Emergency Communications Center, and three of those employees were honored during the 2015 NINA/APCO conference, including the NINA 911 Director of the Year, was our 911 Director of the Year here in Burke County. And go over to community development accomplishments. They began the blueprint Burke Comprehensive Land Use Plan. They received a certificate of plan approval for the Mountains to the Sea Font of Flora State Trail. You also have on the next page, completed the over-mountain victory trail plans for Lenore to Morganton and Morganton to Lake James. Began work on road into the Font of Flora County Park and completed the Park and Recreation Master Plan. Community Development also began the Font of Flora County Park Plan with destination by design and acquired state trail designation for Font of Flora State Trail. You go over to the next page, they completed approval of two major subdivisions, and this is the first in approximately seven years. Continued to work with Burke County Broadband Initiative and mediated expansion of broadband services, in particular between Skyrunner and Duke Energy. Emergency Management completed the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-550 Prime motor vehicle that was procured from a domestic preparedness Region 8 and North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Division grant. And I had Mike take a picture of that, plus one of the message boards, and if you look at the message board, you'll see it says Burke County EM. And that helps us at different types of events or accidents, there's worn motorists on the highway. Going over to the next page, EMS accomplishments, completed construction and activated EMS Station 7 on 615 Follett Street. This was... Grand opening was March 20th, 2015, and information that I have indicates that they've responded to over 3,000 total calls since the EMS station opening. Open and filed, or filed, I'm sorry, eight new paramedic positions in support of the additional contract services with the hospital. We purchased other equipment, including a four-wheel-drive 2015 Dodge ambulance, and our EMS received the certification from the North Carolina Office of EMS as an educational institution for our staff. They participated in active shooting exercises at Drone High School. If you go over to the next page, General Services accomplishments, we did a lot of asphalt resurfacing, and I talked to Chris today, and he said it was just slightly under 6,000 tons of asphalt. So, we've got a lot done. We only have now, I think, the Avery Avenue Building parking lot and the rear parking lot of the courthouse, which we had originally thought was going to be the location for a jail, but that was changed. If you go over to General Services also, and agricultural buildings, they did asphalt crack sealing at the ag extension, roof gutter improvements, and replacement HVAC units. At our senior center here in Morganton, repairs initiated and completed were asphalt crack sealing, lower-level waterproofing. They tell me that this was the wettest November through December on record, and the lower level did not have any leaks after the work was done, and you've got some good photographs there. They dug down to, I guess, the foundation of that building and sealed it and found holes that were... I don't know when they were left, but it may have been before we actually took over occupancy and use of that building, but they've been plugged, and that was part of the problem. Foothills Higher Education Center completed asphalt resurfacing of an overflow parking lot and completed connection to the adjacent medical office lot, added 16 additional parking spaces, and area already asphalted. The Avery Building, they replaced the cooling tower. You see a photograph of that to the right, and then one of the new HVAC units for the first floor. And the upper floor, we switched over to heating units that use natural gas instead of electric heat. The courthouse, they did the back stairway replacement and annex porch replacement, re-poured that concrete. Library, built a privacy fence around Morganton Library, completed window repainting in Morganton, completed storm window installation at Morganton, and completed the renovation relocation of the CB Hildebrand Library in Hildebrand, which that's another project we'll discuss in just a moment. The next page we have is the Sheriff's Department Shooting Range, completed installation of the classroom and bathroom, completed installation of a septic tank, and also did some asphalt work out there to improve the range and make it a little easier for our guys to use that shooting range. General Services and Solid Waste Landfill completed permitting of the next two C and D landfill cells and purchased a new CAT compactor. You've got some other things there about smaller projects that we did for General Services and Solid Waste Division. Move on over to Water and Sewer. They implemented a sewer outfall inspections program, implemented an outfall cleaning, mowing, maintenance schedule, and purchased a CAT skid steer for clearing sewer system maintenance. Water and Sewer, as you know, tonight, we completed the Anna Street Sewer Extension. Going over to the Health Department, our Burke County Health Department received national accreditation on March 4th, 2015, in addition to the state accreditation that they have. They collaborated and initiated a formal process for community engagement with community partners for the Community Health Needs Assessment and the Burke Wellness Initiative. Environmental Health implemented the use of tablet computers for food, lodging, and institutional inspections to increase efficiency. They implemented a virtual primary care clinic to treat acute illnesses through a rural healthcare grant and completed a full-scale mass dispensing exercise in August 2015 with local and state partners. Human Resources, to control the cost of county employees' healthcare expenses, our Human Resource Department created and issued an RFP for an onsite employee health clinic, and that clinic opened and started business in October of 2015. I can tell you that I have been there and am well pleased with the service that I've received, and I think some of our employees that have their children on their plan have also utilized that and been very pleased with the services that they've received to the clinic, and we have a report for you. I anticipate that in March to show the anticipated savings that we have by our employees going there rather than other healthcare providers that charge more money for the services they would have received. Let me go on to a couple more pages and get over to the library accomplishments. As you probably remember, we relocated the CB Hildebrand Public Library from a poolhouse to a temporary site that was a building that was part of the purchase of land that we made to be able to site the new library senior center, and the library will temporarily reside there until construction of the new library senior center is completed. We anticipate this to be somewhere about the first half of 2017, possibly the middle of 2017. You've got several bullets there about different things. The Library Foundation of Burke County received a $35,000 grant from the Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust. The library received $21,250 grant from the State Library of North Carolina to develop its strategic plan for the next five years. They received two grants, grassroots grants totaling $3,100 from Burke Arts Council for an art expo, storytelling festival, and an author's showcase. Library's been busy. They've worked with the Library Foundation of Burke County for their year-end fundraising campaign. The campaign brought in over $25,000. Over the last 12 years, this annual campaign has raised over $280,000 to support library programs, collections, and services. I won't go into all the things that the library has done, but they had more than 1,200 participants in the children's, young adult, and adult summer reading programs, with more than 49,000 items that were circulated as part of these programs. Library's had 121 volunteers who contributed over 4,100 hours of time to support the library programs and services. Go over to the next page. The library's third annual art expo drew more than 400 people to view local artists' works and watch demonstrations in March. The library's third annual Family Fall Festival in October brought more than 500 parents and children to the front lawn of the Morganton Public Library. I understand that the stormtrooper there in that bottom right-hand corner may be somebody in our back control room that was dressed up to participate in the third annual Star Wars Read Day in October, and that brought more than 500 children, young adults, and adults to the Morganton Public Library despite bad weather. Thank you, Scott. And they go on over to North Carolina Cooperative Extension. 13,808 citizens have utilized recommended best practices in landscapes, gardens, pest management, and pruning techniques. Extension master gardeners volunteered over 4,500 hours through the county, throughout the county in reaching a variety of organizations, including options, Jaws Habitat Public Schools, and more savings the county over $100,000 in labor costs. You have a note here about beef quality assurance certification was provided to 46 youth participating in agricultural programs. Cattle producers added over $448,000 in profits and savings to the bottom line. Over 6,000 youth participated in 4H programs and activities in 2015, learning and developing leadership, citizenship, and life skills. Go over to the next page there. It shows you a picture of our ag extension building, talks a little bit about the staff has served 42,306 citizens through one-on-one interactions, small groups, or through one of the 221 educational programs provided. Another 35,333 citizens were reached through telephone, email, and newsletters. In addition to the use of radio, news articles, and the website, we were able to provide educational information and resources to an audience of more than 300,000 people. Burke County Cooperative Extension has a tremendous volunteer network of nearly 3,000 volunteers contributing over 11,000 hours of service to extension, saving the organization and specifically the county an estimated $256,000 approximately. Parks and Recreation completed the paving project at Reap Park to make the fields and concession buildings ADA accessible from all sides. Awarded Glen Alpine Park Project for replacing and adding new concrete around current concession stands for better ADA stands for better ADA accessibility. The project was to be completed in February 2016. Indoor soccer, 172 teams participated and approximately 1,393 children participated in our youth indoor soccer leagues. They scheduled 688 games throughout Burke County and played in an eight-week period. I can't probably get to all these, but baseball, softball, we had 60 teams and approximately 785 children that participated in our softball, baseball leagues. Football had 39 teams and approximately 688 children participating in those games. Basketball, 192 teams, approximately 1,500 children participating in basketball leagues. Outdoor soccer, 24 teams, 264 children participated in our outdoor soccer leagues. Parks and Recreation planned and organized, scheduled, and conducted five different multi-day, multi-hour training clinics for game officials. I'll go down to the Register of Deeds accomplishments. Began e-recording in 2015. Began converting vital records to digital images to preserve the original documents. Scanned over 250 real estate books to prepare for online availability and began participating in the North Carolina Secretary of State's electronic notary oath system. Again, we come to Senior Services. Increased participation in Second Harvest Program, now serving 635 seniors. And you have photographs there, second harvest food given out in the first and third Mondays of each month. In October of 2015, Farmer's Market sponsored by Second Harvest Food Bank and State Employee Credit Union. Farmer's Market, over 300 seniors provided food and approximately 3,000 pounds of vegetables. Senior Services also conducted the Senior Health Insurance Information Program. We'll go down to the Sheriff's Department. After 12 years of use, we are replacing their sidearms. We've also purchased a second K-9 unit for the Sheriff's Department to use, and we replaced four of their vehicles with four-wheel-drive vehicles to better provide citizen services during inclement weather and navigate some of the private roads that are impassable to patrol cars. You may remember a few years back, we created the warrant sergeant position, and this past year, the deputy that's in that position served 2,093 warrants and criminal summonses on approximately 1,300 people. They also began implementation of the automobile vehicle location devices in the patrol cars. I'll go ahead and go to Soil and Water Conservation. Burke Soil and Water Conservation District presented conservation education programs to all 15 elementary schools and all five middle schools in Burke County, reaching the majority of young adults and educating them on conservation and our natural resources, again, in 2015. Let me go on to Soil and Water, the next page. The district sponsors and speech essay contest awards banquet was held each year for middle school students in Burke County. All five middle schools participated in the event this year. Call share programs, Burke Soil and Water Conservation District was allowed $67,315 from the state of North Carolina to implement best practices on local farms and urban lands. These funds were used to implement two stream restoration projects in Burke County, installation of fencing to keep livestock out of the waterways, including one solar tank on multiple localities or locally-owned farms and institutions as well as poultry operations. And then on the next page, you've got the before and after pictures of the streams through the federal cost sharing program, environmental quality incentive program. Three contracts were implemented totaling $338,500 on Burke County farms. Two farms received litter sheds. I don't have pictures of those available for this, but they aided the farmer in mortality of their poultry farms. And then you have the large stream restoration projects showing their before and after pictures. Social Services accomplishments. DSS entered into a partnership with Burke County Health Department and Burke Mission Station to provide a Medicaid caseworker to take and process Medicaid applications. Next, go to Social Services. Also completed backlog of Medicaid recertifications and are working in the current month. They've scanned 4,805 energy program records into our document management system, freeing up 56 shelves in the file room. And if you've been to DSS, you know they don't have a lot of open vacant space there, so that's helpful to them. Veteran Services held the Burke County Veterans Information Fair with over 150 attending this event at the National Guard Armory in Morganton. Conducted the Burke County Annual Memorial Day Service with approximately 410 Ds, including Governor Pat McCrory. The guest speaker was United States Air Force retired Master Sergeant David Turbergan. Veteran Services, November 11th, 2015, conducted the Burke County Veterans Day Annual Services with approximately 350 attendees to recognize veterans who had served and those currently serving. A U.S. Navy retired Master Chief Petty Officer Champ Ray was guest speaker. Clerk to the Board accomplishments. Burke County was awarded $1,200 in scholarships for elected officials to attend various training events, and Madam Clerk also helped us obtain a grant for $27,476.01 for the Commerce Fellows Training Grant for the North Carolina Department of Commerce. We facilitated the Western Regional Academy for City and County Clerks with approximately 25 participants and completed 47 hours of instruction sponsored by the UNC School of Government. County Manager, Library Senior Center, Hildebrand Branch, we hired an architect and construction manager for the project and initiated planning process. Anticipate project, or project completion in the late spring of 2017. And you've got the rendering of the building, the site, and the floor plan there. You remember our ribbon cutting out of the Temporary Library, Hildebrand. I think we've had you all there for that ribbon cutting event. Jail, Commissioners designated construction facility on Government Drive, and the planning is in progress, and you have a rendering of what the outside might look like, plus the potential expansion if it's ever needed. We applied for a $50,000 Appalachian Regional Commission grant to assist in the funding of the Broughton Hospital Facilities reuse study. This is in addition to the $100,000 Golden Leaf Grant that we applied and obtained in 2014. And as we were putting this together, we received the letter from the Governor's Office that he had recommended approval of our receiving the ARC grant. And actually, today, I got a email from the ARC office in Washington, DC, asking me to begin the process to become the contact for the ARC so that they can monitor the grant, which I assume indicates that we are on our path to approval of the ARC by the federal government. Burke County Commissioners appropriated funds to assist in the expansion of the Western Piedmont Community College Megatronics Program, as mentioned earlier. And in this year's budget, you also appropriated funds to enable construction of a second-floor burn building at Western Piedmont Community College that would be of great importance for our volunteer firemen and, I guess, the City of Morton and Fire Department for training purposes. So you've, you've had a busy year, gentlemen.
Brian, we, we just really thank you for your report, and we just thank you too for your leadership, but we also got to really look at our department heads, our county employees, and how many volunteers you were talking about. We couldn't make this all happen if it wasn't for them, and for them, we really thank, thank our employees, our volunteers, I mean, what they do for the county. With that, I'll open it up to any comments from Brian on, on this wonderful report. Any comments from the Commissioners?
Fantastic report, Mr. Commissioner.
All right. Good, and again, we'll receive this as presented, and thank you, Brian. I guess, one thing that Brian's been working on, he's had numerous conversations, emails and that, with a gentleman in Raleigh on the North Carolina Rosenwald School. This was a, many, many schools that were for black students in, in many, many counties and not only counties in North Carolina, but I think North Carolina was probably the biggest county that received help in this endeavor, but it was many, many schools in many, many states. And I just want to read, read this. "The North Carolina Rosenwald School is the first decade of the 20th century, one in five white North Carolinians grew adulthood without learning to read. For the state's African-Americans, the rate was one in two. Despite Southern Reconstruction after the American Civil War, state and federal leniency towards the region's persistent racial prejudice led to continued equality among African-American people. Beginning in 1912, Sears Roebuck and Company President Julius Rosenwald, in collaboration with Booker T. Washington, created a rural school building program for Alabama's African-American communities through initiative of the Tuskegee Institute. In 1917, Rosenwald expanded on that program and established a fund to finance public school buildings for African-Americans across the rural South. At that time, the education facilities for Southern African-Americans were solely substandard, usually much worse than counterpart white schools. Between 1917 and 1932, over 5,300 Rosenwald Schools were constructed in 15 states. Of that number, 813 were built in North Carolina, more than in any other state. Ninety-three of the state's 100 counties had at least one Rosenwald School. The Collaborative Rural School Building Program provided grants to local communities that demonstrated a commitment to matching the Rosenwald funding. The typical proportion was one-third of the cost provided by the Rosenwald Fund, with the remaining two-thirds provided by the local school board and raised by African-American community to be served by the school. In Burke County, five Rosenwald Schools were built at Canal, McAlthaus Chapel, Morganton, Rock Hill, and Willow Tree." And Brian, I know you're working on this, and I think probably what's going to happen, we want to put a clock, a plaque up someplace, and I know you're working with the various groups, History Museum, the courthouse, and whatever, but this is a long time probably overdue, and we just thank you for your work on this too. I don't know if you have any comments on your work on this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it's, we've reached out to different groups to help us provide this information, and we have some photographs that are being shown, that should be shown to our television audience as well, of one of the schools and Mr. Rosenthal, and I will probably place into our recommended budget approximately $3,000 to help with the memorial plaque for the upcoming budget. Thank you again, and it was great to do this recognition.
Good, thank you so much. Any questions for this endeavor on the Rosenwald School? I mean, that's pretty impressive that the president of Sears Roebuck and Company at that time in 1912, that he thought enough to, of our black students to do this. I mean, that was quite a, you know, endeavor. So that was a great thing. We have our committee reports, and this is our committees that we serve on, not so much the comments from the Board of Commissioners, but we'll start. Jack, you have any comments on any of the boards you serve on?
Well, basically, RPO, MPO, as we go down and have a meeting once a month, a repetitive nature, talking about what projects are on the book and who up ahead and things like that. But I guess the best thing for Burke County, 103 and Jamestown Road is pretty much ahead of the line to get those exits unwrapped next. Of course, JCPC is a multifaceted organization for kids, generally, school kids, who get in trouble, and of course, there's different providers or psychology, courts, et cetera. And we just had a, we had a monitoring session, a session for them. That's basically why, basically an audit that we have a list to go down the line, and the providers provide documentation that they're in compliance with the will of the organization. And most of them come out pretty good, so they're doing a good job of what they do, and we certainly appreciate them, what they do.
Good, thank you, Jack. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any new reports since our last meeting.
All right, and I don't have a whole lot, but one thing I did want to report on is on the, on some work that we've been doing at the COG. We felt that North Carolina was, or the western part of the state, especially our four counties, was being slighted on different appointments by the governor, anybody else, the state boards, and so we decided to take action as a, as an executive committee and then pass it on to the full committee, which we got their support 100%. And I'm pleased to report that our, our first position that we got was for Johnny to be, is it the Water Infrastructure Board, Johnny?
Water Infrastructure Authority.
And what really makes me happy is, in the nomination, it was all four counties that had nominated Johnny for this position, and, and we look forward to other, trying to get some other state boards and that, which nobody's really took the leadership for, for ever and ever, and it's just been hit and miss. And as long as I've been on the board, there's not been a whole lot happening in the, in the uniform, but we just, again, the COG was receptive to doing this, and we just really thank those members, and I'm thanking all the members because of the nomination, and we just appreciate Johnny serving on this board. That was an appointment from the governor too, so I'm really tickled that we finally are getting some action, you know, and I think the COG's probably the best group to do this, you know, so whatever. And with that, I'll pass to Brian.
No, sir.
Maynard?
Well, I will report on, a little bit on the mental health. I had the flur to send each one of you the minutes of the last meeting. They were getting longer and longer, so I'll not try to cover each point of that, but just to let you know that it's still doing well. Each month, they report, you know, their savings to the state, and yet they're doing more work. So if you get a chance, read that, the minutes. If you have a question, feel free to call me. Recreation was supposed to meet last month and have a meeting. They did not have a forum, so there is no, nothing to report on the Recreation Committee. Uniform Air Quality and Control is, has done so well over the last years, as I stated last time, and we only meet every quarter now instead of every month, so as we get those, and we, I have requested the minutes to be 40 decay, who will forward those to you, so. But I think it's remarkable how much we have improved over the last eight years on air quality.
Good, thank you, Maynard. Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Water Board and the Library Board has not met since our least, last meeting, so I have no updates.
All right. Any other comments from the Commissioners, or Kay, or JR, or Brian? Anything you want to, any comments that you have to bring before the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think recognition is due Madam Clerk. If Madam Clerk would enlighten us as to the award that she received.
Let's give her a big round of applause.
Did that in June, right?
I received my designation as a master certified county clerk, and I'll get the official plaque in April.
And how many of those are there in the state of North Carolina?
Through this, through the School of Government, seven. First year of the program. You had to be a certified county clerk six years before you were even eligible to seek that designation and required about 100 hours of continuing education.
Well, thank you, Kay. That's wonderful. Out of 100 counties, seven, that's pretty impressive. Anything else, JR?
Well, I'd just say, Mr. Chairman, since we've heard from our Elections Director tonight that how important it is for all of our citizens to get registered and to vote, we've got a primary coming up a lot earlier, two months earlier than it usually does, and all our citizens need to take advantage of this, this great advantage that America gives its citizens, and that is the ability to cast citizens, and that is the ability to cast their votes.
Good, thank you, JR. Anything else from the board? All right, Kay, go ahead and read the boards and the committee vacancy reports.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees: the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment, Burke County Board of Health, and the Burke County Board of Library, Burke County Library Board of Trustees.
All right, thank you, Kay. And from what I understand here, there's closed session not needed unless something's changed, and with this, a motion to recess, and we'll be recessing to Friday, February 26, that's not this Friday, the Friday after, and we'll start at 8:30 a.m. in what building?
Here in this building.
Right, right here in this, right here? And so I'll be happy to accept a motion to recess till that meeting on February 26, 2/16, 8:30 a.m.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.